Good evening. My name is Barnett Overett. I chair the Town of Foxborough Zoning Board of Appeals. And I am calling to order the January 20, 2022 Public Meeting of the Board, including the public hearings that the Board will conduct this evening. We're conducting this meeting in a hybrid matter. Kim Mellon, Kurt Yegian, and I are participating remotely. Lorraine Brew and our administrative assistant, Diana Gray, are live and in person at Town Hall. Public comments this evening will be accepted during the public hearing. For anyone who wishes to offer comments by Zoom, you'll be asked to use the button in Zoom that is labeled Raise Hand. And this will alert you, will alert us that you wish to speak. And we will individually bring you into the meeting. In the event of any technical problems, the meeting will be paused until such issues are resolved. If the technical problems cannot be resolved in a timely manner, the meeting will be adjourned. The matters on our agenda that have not been considered will be continued to the Board's next meeting. And that meeting currently is scheduled for February 18, 2022. And because three of us are participating remotely, all votes that we take tonight will be done by roll call. The time being, 7:00 PM. Scott Martiniac and Calbrook Construction seek a variance pursuant to the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Chapter 275, Section 4.1, Table 4-1, to allow a front yard setback of 30 feet where 35 feet is required for the construction of a front porch on a new, single-family dwelling. The property is located at 16 Garrett Spillane Road, Susser's Map 12, Parcel 49, in the R40 Residential and Agricultural Zoning District, and is not located in any restrictive overlay districts. Is Mr. Martiniac there?
Yes.
Hi, yes, Scott Martiniac, Honored Applicant.
Scott, why don't you just give us a little background information as to what you're planning and telling us why you believe a variance is authorized?
Okay. So to give a brief history here, if we look at the first plan, Bottom Right Zoning Board of Appeals Plan. So we're looking at Lot 48A on that plan. A couple of things. The, if you look below the lot on the adjacent lot, there's a label at the top, Certified Vernal Pool, Isolated Land Subject to Flooding. Just so a note, history of this. When I purchased this parcel, started development, road construction was going on. This certified vernal pool is an isolated land subject to flooding. For those not familiar with conservation rules, regulations, an isolated land subject to flooding, the only protection that it has is the actual border of that land. There is no buffer zone. So going into this project, my lot was 100% upland. So with the view of, there were basically no restrictions other than zoning restrictions. If you look at the date, the vernal pool was finally certified on 1/7/2021, which happened midway through my process. So of course, that threw a large wrench in my plans here. So on that same plan, there is, if you start far left corner, there's a dotted black line there. And if you follow that through, goes behind Proposed House, works its way over all the way, almost to the right-hand, far right-hand corner of the lot. That is the buffer zone. So when a vernal pool is certified in a town of Foxborough, this is beyond a state regulation. This is strictly a town regulation. There is a 100-foot no disturb zone from the edge of the vernal pool. And basically, again, that's what that dotted line represents, is that no disturb zone. When I started the process, once this happened, again, kind of caught midstream. Okay, we got to go to Plan B here. I went in front of the Conservation Commission several times, fought really, really hard to get some relief from that 100-foot buffer zone so it would give us a little bit of room to construct the home. I basically got nowhere with the Conservation Commission. So we started to regroup to try to sort this out. So if we go to the next plan, Plan of Land, Foxborough Mass, Garrett Spillane Road, you can see, once again, we have 49A, 48A. If you look at, there's a dashed line, original property line. And then there's a darker, bold line. That is the newly created property line. So we came up with the idea is let's alter this property line to allow us to push the house to the left, which would be further away from the no disturb buffer zone from the vernal pool. We weren't able to move that line any further because of restrictions from existing or proposed structure, septic system, tideline setback. So we pushed it over as far as we can. Just to backpedal a little bit, a brief history for anyone who's not familiar with Garrett Spillane Road. So Garrett Spillane Road was formerly Camp Road, which was a way in existence, which went from North Street to Beach Street on paper. The name was changed because Edwards Road essentially kind of cuts off Camp Road. And for emergency access, the fire department asked that we rename the road so there wasn't confusion over Camp 1, Camp 2. So the lots were all lots in existence also. Most of them conform. A couple were pre-existing, non-conforming. So that's why the lots are kind of very odd shaped because they were already existing. So I think that covers that. Now, I was in the process, so I'm builder developer down there. And I was in the process of working with a customer before vernal pool was certified. Had a plan in place, had a site plan in place. And obviously, we had to change course. So we've been altering lot lines, grades, re-perking because now we have to move a septic system because of the certified vernal pool in the buffer zone. Made some alterations to the house plan to try to make it work within the envelope that we had. Did a really good job. Fell short of, okay, we have everything except customer really wanted to put farmer's porch on the front of the house. And we couldn't make the house work and then put the farmer's porch, say, 35 feet off of the required frontage. So as a note, once again, because this is a newly, now a newly constructed road, constructed under subdivision bylaws, the 35 feet is from the road taken. We're actually, would be 45 feet from pavement. Or I'm proposing that we are 40 feet from pavement. The, something else that may be of interest is the house to the right of it, facing it, is, I believe, don't hold me to this, but I think is approximately 37 feet off of the road. So at 30 feet, it would still fit in character with what else is going on down there. The same thing, the adjacent house is affected by a neighbor in vernal pool, which was certified, which also has 100-foot no disturb zone. So that was pushed forward to allow for some backyard on that property. Again, as you can see on the plan, I am now on the actual house plan. You know, we were able to keep the entire main structure of the house, the 35 feet off. Actually, I think we're 36 feet off to give us a little bit of buffer. But once again, just trying to do that porch. If we make the porch the 35 feet, it pushes us too close to the corner over in here. You know, when the Conservation Commission says that that's a no disturb area, they literally mean, don't touch that area. So it would not allow me to have any room whatsoever to perform any kind of work if we put the corner of the house, the corner of foundation, right on the line. And essentially, by moving it to, to get the porch 35 feet, we would be right on the line.
When you say right on the line, which?
That 100-foot no disturb zone for the vernal pool.
Oh, okay. Okay. Let me just ask you a couple of questions. Before I do that, let me also explain. There were four board members here tonight. You know, three remote, as I indicated, and one who is with you in Town Hall. Only three of us vote. And Kim Mellon and I are regular members, so we vote. The other regular member is not here tonight. So I'm going to point Kurt to vote on this particular matter. Lorraine is also able to participate in the discussion, ask questions. But only Kim, Kurt, and I will be the individuals voting. And in order to approve the variance, our decision must be unanimous. All three of us have to vote in favor of the variance. So let me just ask you a couple of questions that come to mind. When I came down Garrett Spillane Road earlier today, this would be, there was a house that's under construction right now. And then there's a foundation across the street on the other side.
Yes.
Now, which lot would this be? Would this be after the house that's under construction?
Yeah, so right after the house under construction. I don't know if you took note, there was, one of my trailers was sitting there. Basically, the house would sit right behind that trailer.
Okay. So is it what, Lot 49A that's under construction? Is that correct?
Yes.
My understanding, and we checked this, or at least I had Diana check this earlier, is you haven't received any building permits yet, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, you mentioned you've been working with a customer. Do you have a signed agreement with that party?
I do not have a signed agreement other than a contingent type of agreement, mostly because we're just trying to resolve all of the issues. Again, at first, we spent about six months trying to get through conservation. So I didn't feel comfortable signing anything. Until we knew what the outcome was going to be with that. And basically, it's kind of left that based on, hinged on what happens tonight. So there's no hypotheticals involved in it.
So are you indicating that if we would not be granting the variance, would that customer no longer be interested in the house?
That I am not sure. That would be up to them. We really haven't discussed that.
And is there a significant price differential as far as what you would, you know, require be paid for the house without the porch versus with the porch?
I would say not really. Probably pretty much just the value of the porch itself.
Okay. So let me, let Kim, Kurt, Lorraine ask any questions they may have.
Barney, I do have a couple of questions. Well, actually, first, I just want to ask for some clarification. So in looking at the application that you sent to us, it does indicate Parcel 49. But then in looking at the plan, one of the plans, the one that says Zoning Board of Appeals, it actually appears as 48A. So I just want to ask for some clarification on that because we need to make sure that our decision reflects the correct parcel.
Yes, I would say that that was probably my error. The 48A, I'm sure, you know, all of this stuff was done by Bay Colony. So I certainly trust their labeling the lots better than mine. And I believe that that's right because I was always kind of confused by that because it was further down the road. You would always think that it would be opposite of that, that 48 would come before 49. I think that that was just my error on the application.
Okay, so we're actually?
They're looking at 48A, yes.
48A, okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay, no, no, I just, it's important that we have the right number down there. So thank you for the clarification. And so if I'm understanding you correctly, if the porch was subtracted from the plans, then this plan would meet the setback requirements?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have for the moment.
Kurt, any questions?
You're on mute, Kurt.
Thanks, Barney. Just a couple of questions. So how long have you owned the lot that's there now, the 48A?
Trying to think. Probably purchased it somewhere in June of 2021. If that was '21, that would have been '20, 2020? It's been a process of, I've actually been working on this project for 18 years. And because of all of the lots, as I mentioned earlier, were existing lots, they were all different owners. One of which was the Town of Foxborough at one point. So it was putting the pieces together, that being the very last piece of the puzzle that I had to put together.
I see. And the other question is, and just so I understand, I'm trying to put the whole thing together in my head. When there was a certified vernal pond created there, what was that process? What, how does that?
So the, basically, anyone?
How does that whole thing happen?
Okay, I'm sorry, I talked over you. Basically, anyone can file to certify a vernal pool. There's some documentation required. They have to prove a vernal pool species is in the isolated land subject to flooding, some other miscellaneous information. It goes in front of the National Heritage. And the National Heritage determines yea or nay. It's a certified vernal pool. And just a little bit on, you know, I'm not a wetland specialist by any means, but the Mass DEP regulations for certified vernal pool requires only the vernal pool be protected. There is no buffer under state regulations. The 100-foot no disturb is purely just a Town of Foxborough bylaw.
I was just trying to get more of like a timeline. Like how, when did it happen that when you purchased the property, did that trigger something that caused the vernal pool to be certified? Or what was the timeline of those two things happening?
Yes, that, you pretty much summed it up. That was, if you will, maybe an attempt to prevent development, the certification of the vernal pool.
So let me intervene. So who started the process as far as the certification?
The Town Conservation Agent. And at the time, one of the other members?
No, that's all I had. I was just trying to get that, like, the series of events, what happened there? That's all I have for right now.
Lorraine?
I don't have any questions, Barney.
I thought I had one, but I can't remember it. Actually, I think I know the answer, but let me ask it anyhow. The plan that's entitled Zoning Board of Appeals Plan shows that you have a side yard setback of 17 feet. We require 15 feet. If you were to move the house to 15 feet, if you were to, in other words, you know, lay your foundation on the side next to Lot 49A at 15 feet, would you be able to move the house a little bit back towards the term area? And still not disturb it? And still be able to put a porch in without needing a front yard setback?
I think that we played with that. And what happens is the front line, if you see, so that line comes to a point. And the reason for that is because frontage required for 49A. That's why we have the point there. And I think as we moved it over, we started to have an issue coming into the front of it.
Okay. So in other words, there's no way to move the house?
Yeah, we, again, this has been being worked on for almost a year. And we've backed and flipped and tossed and turned in everything we possibly could to make this work.
Yeah, okay. Now, you've constructed some of the other homes on Garrett Spillane Road, correct?
Yeah, most of them. There was one existing that I didn't construct. And there was one that was built by another builder. The rest of them I constructed.
Okay, and that wasn't in accordance with a subdivision plan?
So the road has been built under subdivision bylaws, but nothing, we followed the way in existence and pretty much stayed with lot lines that were existing. We didn't reconfigure this like a typical subdivision would have been done. Some lines have been moved over the years for various reasons.
Right. And in, sort of in relation to the last couple of questions, again, when I drove through the neighborhood this morning, or this afternoon, rather, the houses are all different. It's not as if you're putting up, you know, the same house in accordance with what you might typically see in a subdivision.
Right.
And my recollection is that there's only one other house that really has a front yard porch. Would that be correct?
Existing, now the, actually, if you look at what is now proposed, they're all gonna, the new ones are all gonna have front yard porches, are proposed front yard porches. So the last house that's completed on the left-hand side has a porch in the front. Skipper house in between has a porch in the front. So yeah, there are porches on some of the other houses.
All right. Any other question that anybody, questions anyone may have?
No.
So Scott, the criteria for a variance, let me read it, you know, specifically. Owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape, or topography of land and structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, is criteria number one. Criteria number two, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the applicant. And three, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. So those are the requirements for a variance. And an applicant, in order to obtain favorable decision relative to the request, must satisfy each of, each one of those three requirements. You know, clearly, this is an odd-shaped lot. And clearly, you've got, I guess you would say, topography because of the vernal pool and the no disturb zone. You'd be deck requirement. And I don't have any problem with, if we were to grant this, in saying that there's no substantial detriment to the public good and we're not going to nullify or abrogate or substantially derogate from the intent and purposes of the bylaw. So the real issue is the hardship issue. And unless, you know, Kurt, or Lorraine, or Kim disagree, I think that's really the only issue that we need to be comfortable with in order to determine whether to grant the request. So what is the hardship? And again, it's substantial hardship according to the, well, state statute and the zoning bylaw.
In my eyes, the hardship was the certification of the vernal pool in a 100-foot buffer zone. And, you know, we've made a very strong attempt by recreating lot lines and doing whatever we possibly could. And once again, fighting very hard with the Conservation Commission to try to get relief so we could do what we were trying to do here. I mean, you can see, if you look at the lot in the little area tucked over in the corner where the house is, and once again, view this, this is 100% uplands. There was zero wetlands on this lot whatsoever. So we've tucked it into the corner. So already, it's created a hardship for, you know, myself essentially in terms of value because of that. And for future homeowner, because they are now so restricted. They have this little over an acre of land and they can only use a little small section of it. I take that back. They can use this area, but they can never disturb it in any manner.
So Scott, you think that determination of the vernal pool reduced the value?
Absolutely reduced the value significantly.
Are there any concerns from the neighbors about doing this? Have they raised objections at all?
Nobody has, nobody's present to object to it. And I don't see why they would. Again, it's, if we were going in there and, you know, every other house in the neighborhood was set back 75, 80 feet or something like that, and this one was going to be close. But that is not the case. Probably the furthest setback would be the one when you drove through the neighborhood where the existing foundation is in there. And that, again, was something based on the septic system and the configuration of the lot lines. And especially this here, just because it's kind of on the cul-de-sac anyway, I don't even think that visually, it's going to give an appearance that it's any closer than any other house. Because it's, like, if we take the porch area for an example, that's starting the radius of the cul-de-sac. So if you wanted to technically measure to pavement, it'll be further away to the edge of pavement than probably the other homes are. But the road taken goes straight, obviously. The cul-de-sac kind of bubbles off to the left a little.
Going again towards the issue of hardship, you know, I do agree that the shape of the property and the existence of the vernal pool has obviously impacted where you can place the house. But you can construct a house and still comply with, you know, the applicable dimensional requirements. So the hardship has to relate to what you're looking for, which is a variance to allow the porch to be constructed. So let me ask my colleagues. What do you see here in that vein?
Well, if I could ask another question, you may start. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me do this here. Am I on?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. You mentioned you don't have a contract in force with the potential buyer. Are they looking at other properties? Is it likely that this could be something that would not want to have them move to the area or to the community?
Possibly. I can't say that, you know, definitely what the situation would be. They have been sticking with me through a lot of, if you will, hard times. Originally, this house was very nicely situated, looking up the road, walkout basement, you know, really nice lot, nice and private, end of the cul-de-sac, there's all woods back here. It was very desirable at that point. I thought that I was going to lose them as a customer when the certified vernal pool issue came in. And I'd been, you know, working it hard, if you will, and trying to, why I'm here tonight, I'm trying to give them as close to what they would desire as I possibly can. trying to, why I'm here tonight, I'm trying to give them as close to what they would desire as I possibly can. And the plan has been altered. The plan was different originally, so we went back to the drawing board with the architect to try to make it fit in there better than it, and, you know, as best we possibly could. As you see, if you look at it, you know, I'm looking at the plan facing the road right now, the right-hand side, you know, the, the structure was jogged in to accommodate for that area where the hundred-foot starts to drift closer to the house. Um, and as you look at, so another situation that comes into play, which is somewhat of a hardship, the, we have a situation, the driveway is a funny shape because we have to enter, into the property over the property. We can't enter, into the property from another person's property. So because of that little point that comes to the, um, lot line, and we're as close to what we are as we're in the, um, ten-foot road taken, so it's not a hundred percent on its own property, but it's within the ten-foot road taken.
The, the plans that you provided us, um, relative to the, um, to the house, um, did the initial plans include a, um, a farmer's porch?
The initial plans did, yes. In fact, it was a, it was a larger farmer's porch on the original plan. Um, and it had a, a, what would be a more conventional deck, um, in the rear of the house, the, basically, the deck now that you see is just a little more than a platform to allow to get access down to the backyard because there's no area to, to put a deck and stay outside of the, the hundred-foot, hun- yeah, hundred-foot buffer zone.
Okay. Um,
We can't tweak, we tried, can we tweak it a little bit? We, then what happens is, y- you know, corner gets too close to the, we lose our thirty-five feet again.
Mm-hmm.
Barney?
Yes. Yes.
So I just wanted to mention, you know, so the idea of having, you know, the hardship in terms of the value of this property that was created by the certification of the vernal pool, building the porch adds whatever dollar value to what could be possibly regained from what was lost.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm wondering if that supports a hardship aspect.
Well, I believe that, um, the applicant said earlier that there really is no financial loss with the porch not being there. The only financial difference would be the, the cost of the porch, is I believe what the applicant had said earlier.
Yeah, that's, that, that, that's my recollection as well, and actually what I wrote down as far as my notes. Um, I, I, I think what I want to do is this, is, is, is there anybody at Town Hall who would wish to speak on this?
No.
There's no member of the public? Is there anybody who is on Zoom who wishes to speak? So one of what we do is close the quote-unquote "public portion" of the hearing, and then we can, we, we can discuss this. Though even though there's nobody on the public there, why don't we, why don't we close it? So Kim, would you make a motion?
Yes, I move that we close the public portion of the meeting.
Uh, Kurt, you want to second it? And again, I've gotta do this by roll call, so Kim?
Yes.
Kurt? And Barney, yes. So, let's, uh, let's, let's discuss. Um, a- again, you know, soil conditions, shape, topography, I think that requirement is met, and I'm not concerned about, you know, any detriment to the bylaw or anything of that nature. Um, but we, what we have to make a determination is to, is whether the soil condition, shape, or topography of the property, um, cause a substantial hardship to the, uh, to the applicant, to, to what the applicant is desiring. So again, um, a- and I want to hear, you know, as much as possible from, you know, Kurt, Kim, and, and Lorraine on this. A, a house can be constructed on the premises and still meet the applicable dimensional requirements of the bylaw, both as far as the side yards and as far as the front yard. So really, the question is whether by adding a five-foot wide porch and, and therefore violating the setback requirement, whether there's a substantial hardship related to the porch itself or not to the house. So hopefully, hopefully that's clear, I'm not sure that it is, but, but I think that's really the issue. The issue has nothing to do with, with the house per se because the house, as proposed, will comply with the, um, dimensional requirements. It's the porch that would cause the house not to comply. So therefore, what we have to determine is, is whether because of the topography, because of the soil conditions, because of the shape of the property, there would be substantial hardship to the applicant if we were to say that variances is, is not permissible, that we have to comply with the requirements of the bylaw. But it has to do with the porch, because again, the house can be constructed. So let me leave it to whoever wants to go first. Give me your thoughts.
Um, I'll go first. So it sounds like this has been a very long road, certainly. Um, and and as Barney said, there, we are not talking about to build or to not build this house. The house can be built without coming before us at all. So we're just coming down to a porch. And wh- what I keep circling back to in my head is what the applicant said closer to the beginning of this hearing, that there is no financial loss if the porch is not built. The financial difference has to do with the materials for the porch. Now, if I'm remembering that incorrectly, or I'm saying that incorrectly, I'm happy to be corrected on that, happy to be corrected on that. So I keep coming back to that. So we're talking about a porch that is encroaching, and I'm not sure if a porch, having a porch or not having a porch, is a substantial hardship. But I do agree with Barney on the others. There certainly are some topography issues in here. And, you know, adding a porch into a house in a, on a road is, is certainly not, um, something that's going to be detrimental to the neighborhood. But I, I'm a little bit stuck on the hardship.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Kurt, you want to go next?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I agree with everything Kim just said, frankly. Um, she put it very well. I understand that this is a long and complicated project and process, and it sounds like you've been very diligent and thoughtful with your client throughout the entire thing. So it doesn't seem like there's any detriment to the neighborhood. It doesn't seem like, um, there's any of those sort of negative factors that typically come up in something like this. Um, but again, it gets back to, you know, the, the hardship nature of this. And, um, you know, the one thing I've learned being on the zoning board, it's not, it's not really about a, it's, it's sometimes not about a specific case, but about a precedent, right? And if, if this happens and we allow it, then what's to stop the next person from saying, well, you allowed it to the applicant and, uh, you know, not to, not to me? And so that's what we just have to be really careful of. And I never really realized that until I started getting into more of these types of situations. And, uh, it is about precedent, so I stand.
Uh, Lorraine?
No, I, I think, you know, Kim, Kim hit the nail on the head recalling that language, so, um, I think probably my, to me, the questionable part where there is no agreement here, you know, it's, it's a guess that there would be, you know, what is the potential for loss of this project if a porch isn't granted?
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Because we're close to, I, do I, can I say something or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Um, so once again, we're, we're on the, the financial hardship. So from my perspective, what would the financial hardship be now? Um, if we look at, again, the plan zoning board of appeals, and if you envision this whole thing sliding back five feet, we now have a situation, if you see the stairs and the deck, that's gonna encroach into the hundred foot buffer zone, so that's gonna have to be changed. Um, and are removed. Remove the porch. So will there be a direct financial hardship from the porch itself, as I stated earlier? No, I don't think that the house has stronger, any more value, and probably a little bit more value, but nothing significant if the porch is there or not there. But it would be a big hardship being this far into the process. That's my customer said, you know what, I'm done. I don't get the porch now, I don't know how I'm gonna get from, from floor one to floor two. We have to start the design process all over. They've been, again, going along for the ride for quite some time. So the hardship for the applicant would be is that if my potential customer decided that they just didn't want to pursue this any further.
I mean, let, let me, let me throw the question over to, before I speak to Kim, Kurt, and Lorraine. Does that cause any difference in opinion?
I think if there's nothing signed, I mean, that, that, I appreciate what you're saying, and I understand that's, of course, the next question for you, but I'm not sure that, as this board can deal with hypotheticals like that.
Okay, Kurt?
Well, I, I thought I had asked earlier if that was gonna prevent them from moving to the community.
Yeah.
I, I was being, I was meaning specifically the house.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Lorraine?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, um, not, not, not that I necessarily expected anything, you know, differently. Um, but, but I agree, you know, a hundred percent with, um, you know, with what Kurt and, and Kim and, and Lorraine have, have stated. Um, you know, obviously, you know, being an attorney, I, I, I guess, um, you know, for, 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 for good or bad, being an attorney, um, you know, I do look at applications we have from, you know, from that perspective. And, you know, it's clear from, you know, case law that variances should be seldomly, you know, given. And it, I think it's also clear that, you know, very frequently, decisions turn on whether there is or is not, again, substantial hardship. And you know, if this was a case of whether a house can be constructed on the property, um, I think I can make out a, an argument that there would be substantial hardship to, uh, to Mr. Martiniac. But you can construct a house on the property. Um, I would hope that, you know, you would not lose this prospective, you know, customer. But if you do, that does not foreclose the house being sold to, to somebody else. So unfortunately, I do not see, um, you having complied with the requirement or having met the requirement in this particular instance of, um, of substantial hardship. So unless there's something else to be said or asked, um, a motion from somebody?
Uh, I move that we decline the application.
Do we have a second?
A second then.
And again, a role call, uh, Kim?
Uh, yes.
A, a yes vote would be to, again, deny the application, to deny the request for a variance.
Uh, yes.
Uh, Kurt?
Yes.
And, um, uh, me, yes. Um, Scott, let me say a, a couple of things. Um, first of all, thank you very much. Um, you know, I appreciate the, um, well, I, actually, I appreciate the, the work, I think we all appreciate the work you've done with the Conservation Commission.
We do.
To, um, to try to comply with, um, with their requirements and still have a, have a buildable lot. Um, I do appreciate, and I know I'm speaking on behalf of the board, um, you know, your, your efforts tonight to, um, you know, to make your case. Um, I certainly hope that, notwithstanding our decision, your current potential customer buyer will, 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 will stay the course. And if not, I'm certain, I'm not, not shouldn't say I'm certain, but I'm hopeful that, you know, in, in due course, you would be able to find another buyer, you know, such that you can, you know, construct a house with, without a porch that obviously complies with the, um, with the zoning bylaw. We will draft and sign a decision. I'm gonna hopefully be able to do that sometime next week. After it is fully signed, um, Diana will be filing it with the town clerk. That kicks off a twenty-day appeal period, which means that you have the right to appeal our decision. You know, the appeal would have to be to either the land court or the superior court. But you have that right, and you would have to do it within the twenty-day period after the decision is certified by the town clerk. Any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Okay, the time being seven oh five PM. And a little bit after that, we have the continued public hearing of Media Partners, MRV LLC requesting a special permit pursuant to the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter two thirteen, signed Section two thirteen dash three C one A, Section two thirteen dash five A one, Table one permitted signs, and two thirteen dash six A one, Table two, Dimensional, Dimensional Requirements Billboards. Allow the conversion of the two sides of existing static billboard to an electronic billboard. Billboard is located on Washington Street, Assessor's Map zero zero four dash zero zero nine, and is located in Sign District one. As I indicated, at the very first hearing, this is not for a special permit, but it's a special sign permit. And Frank, um, Lorraine will join Kim and I in voting on this particular matter. Whenever you're ready.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, Attorney Frank Splain here, representing Media Partners, MRV LLC. As the applicant with me here this evening is, uh, Peter McClary, who is an owner and manager within Media Partners. Initially, I'd like to thank the board for their tolerance in our continuances, uh, for the last few months. Um, we've been attempting to get, um, examples of exemptions, uh, within the state for, um, um, certain electronic billboards, uh, within a certain distance of each other. We've been unable to get that, even though we've filed requests, um, with them. Uh, so we're gonna continue here this evening. However, we're going to only request, uh, electronic, um, billboard on one side. We're withdrawing our request for a north-facing billboard sign, um, at this time. And we're just requesting for a south-facing electronic billboard at this time. And as I go through my presentation, I'll explain further the reasons for, for why we've decided that. Um, and initially, we're doing that because under the state, uh, CMR, we, we're not requiring an exemption for that, it's just allowed under their CMR. Uh, whereas with regard to the, um, north-facing, uh, billboard, we would have needed an exemption, and those were the decisions we were trying to get copies of to provide the board. So, um, just to go over, um, the property is located on Route one, Washington Street. It has an address of fourteen fourteen Providence Highway. It's, uh, the Assessor's Map zero zero four, parcel zero zero nine, and is in the S-one zoning district. Uh, we're requesting, uh, from this board a special, um, sign permit. We're requesting from this Board a special sign permit in order to convert the static billboard that's currently there to, again, electronic billboard for the south-facing static billboard. And we need assigned permits under Section 213-3C1A and G, 213-5A1, Table 1, and 213-6A1, Table 2. Again, we're trying to request to change, again, just the south-facing billboard to electronic billboard. Also, we need a special permit to allow electronic billboard that's within 108 feet of another electronic billboard. I'd just like to clarify, in my letter to you, I indicated that it was a distance of 881 feet away. It is actually 808 feet between where the current static billboard is and where the electronic billboard is. That electronic billboard is located at the intersection of Route 1 and North Street by the McDonald's there. And that was the first billboard in Foxborough that was electronic. So, under the bylaw, electronic billboards have to be 1,000 feet apart. We're requesting a sign, a special sign permit, to allow us to be 808 feet apart from the next closest one. Initially, we, again, we have a existing two-sided static billboard there now. Metrovision LLC, under Case 2019-15, which is dated January 2020, received the special sign permit to install the two-sided static billboard, which is 672 square feet on each side. And then, in January 2021, a year ago, the Board of Appeals approved the transfer of the special sign permit to Media Partners, MRV LLC, who is the applicant at this time. The two-sided static billboard has been constructed and is ready for operation. Initially, the first thing we're requesting, again, is a special permit to convert one of the sides, and again, that is the south-facing side, from a stack billboard to an electronic billboard. The existing sign is, again, 14 by...14 feet by 48 feet, 672 square feet area, 50 feet in height. The proposed electronic billboard is identical in size and dimension as the existing, it's going to be using the same structure, just changing over from a static to an electronic sign. All of those, the new billboard signs that are being built today, that are static, are also being built to accommodate electronic billboards. Again, we're not requiring structural other changes to the existing billboard structure, again, except from converting from a stack to electronic. Section 213-3C2 sets forth the factors that have to be considered for a special sign permit. And those are...first, there as follows. First, the design guidelines under Section 213-7 have to be followed, and we'll get to those later. The second thing is the impact of the proposed sign on the proposed bylaw, neighbors, neighboring property, and character of area. The signed bylaw was amended by overwhelming vote in the May 2019 town meeting. It reflected that the town favored favorably the view of operating electronic billboards on Route 1. Route 1 is a commercial area, it's commercial nature, so there will be no impact on the character of the area or any neighboring properties. The number of billboards that are currently installed on Route 1 are quite a few. There are two electronic currently, one, again, on McDonald's, and one further down on one side. And there are more billboards and electronic billboards along Route 1 in neighboring towns. And the various businesses on Route 1 also have other types of electronic signs. They're smaller in size, but there are a number of those. So, the change over to an electronic billboard will be in character with the area and will not be out of character with the area. The third item is location and visibility of the sign from public way or park. There are no parks in the general area, and the sign will really only be visible from Route 1 where it's being located. The proposed signs, proximity to existing signs. Again, to the south, there's a static billboard 787 feet away, and there's an electronic billboard 808 feet away. Again, that electronic billboard is north-facing. It does have a static billboard south-facing. So, it's two-sided, but it's only one electronic billboard on that one by McDonald's, and that is north-facing. So, it really won't have any impact on either of those. The fifth one is the proximity and visibility of the proposed sign to residential uses. There's no residential area situated in the Route 1 area within close proximity of the sign, and the sign will not adversely impact any residential use. The closest residence in Foxborough is over 1,000 feet away, and in Walpole, over 700 feet away. Item number six is the nature and condition of other structures or land uses on the site. The current use of the property is for parking, there's no other business being run there. So, the sign will have no impact on the current use of it. The parking still continues to go on there. The property is limited to the parking use because of the wetlands that are located on the southwesterly portion of the site. And in the plan that I provided you, you can see the wetlands, and then there's a 100-foot wetland buffer zone. The existing sign was located, so it's outside both the wetlands and the 100-foot buffer zone. And that's what the original static billboard was located there for that purpose, so that would not be located in the wetlands or in the 100-foot buffer zone. Because of the wetlands and the different buffer zones, the property really can't be developed to its full extent, it's permitted under the zoning bylaw. And that's why it's continued to be used just for parking, and why this stack billboard was initially constructed, and why we want to convert, at least at this time, one side of the stack billboard to electronic. Item number seven is the public safety issues or concerns that the proposed sign might create or impact. The change from a static to electronic on one side, that change will not create any additional traffic or other safety issues, and it won't impact any of the current existing conditions. Item number eight is the elimination of the proposed sign, the size, height, material, color. Again, the sign is there currently, it's not going to change except for going from static to electronic on one side, so there'll be no change in size, height, material, colors. The illumination will change from a static, which is spotlights located on the bottom reflecting up, to electronic, which adds minimal spillover. Item number nine is the benefit to the town of Fox...the town of Foxborough residents and general public. The town will benefit with additional taxes going from stack to electronic and other revenues. And there's also mitigation payments that will have to be made because of, under the bylaw, mitigation agreement has to be agreed to with Board of Selectment before any billboard can be constructed or converted from stack to electronic. Foxborough businesses on Route 1 and elsewhere within the town will also benefit with additional advertising mechanism that's located on Route 1. Instead of being a static, it'll be electronic, so you can get additional advertising on that for the town. The Board, in granting its previous special permit in order to allow the static billboard to be constructed and operated, determined that we satisfied all of these at that time factors in order to be...provide that special sign permit. And we feel that we're meeting those requirements at this time also. Also, under the bylaw, there's additional prohibitions, the billboard cannot be animated, can't contain moving content or video, and has to change over every 10 seconds. An additional, the state has requirements with regard to construction and operation of electronic billboards. So, that's the first part of the special permit we have to go, to get allowance to change over from static to electronic. The other part is the special permit to allow electronic billboard within 808 feet from another electronic billboard, where 1,000 feet is required under Note 2 of Section 213-6A1, Table 2, for Sign District 1. Section 213-3C1G requires that the special sign permit to exceed dimensional requirements or reduce the 1,000 feet down to 808 feet set forth in the bylaw, but it must adhere to the sign design guidelines of Section 213-7, which is also one of the factors for this regular special permit. A special sign permit can be authorized by the Board by allowing the proposed electronic billboard to be within 100 feet, mainly because of the physical features of the subject property. Again, there are wetlands that are located on the southwestern portion of the site. Could you bring up the plan?
He can put it...
Okay.
It's right there, so...
As you can see, to the south and west, there's a great deal of wetlands. But then, you also have to...there's a 25 no activity zone, which you can't do anything in. Then you have the 100-foot wetland buffer. And because of that, the sign had to be placed out of those areas. And as you can see, as the ASBIL plan, the sign itself is outside, and each of the billboards themselves are outside, and the southbound-facing billboard gets very close to the 100-foot wetland buffer, but does not go over that. And that's...so that technically, we could have placed the billboard, we'll say, 200 feet further down, further south on the property, but it would have been located in the wetlands. But because of the location of the wetlands, and we're not wanting to disturb them, even though you can replicate up to 500, 5,000 square feet of disturbed wetlands, we wanted to be outside of that as well as the 100-foot wetland buffer. And that's what caused the current billboard to be located where it is, which is causing it to be just over 800 feet from the other electronic billboard. The Board, therefore, can and is permitted to allow electronic billboard at the current position, which is 808 feet from another electronic billboard, due to the physical features of the property. Again, the wetlands and the buffer is a large portion of the property. Outside of the...it being only 808 feet from the other electronic billboard, it will comply with all dimension, it does comply with all dimensional requirements of electronic billboard that's set forth in Table 2 of the bylaw. Again, the design guidelines under Section 213-7, the first one states, "The sign shall be consolidated..." "Signs shall be consolidated and limited in number to the greatest extent possible to minimize visual clutter." By converting the existing stack billboard to an electronic one, we will not be increasing the number of signs, it's the same number of signs, so that factor is not involved here. The second one states that the sign shall be constructed of high-quality material and utilize energy-efficient illumination. It currently does, and the conversion of it will continue to use high-quality material and energy-efficient illumination. The third design guideline was, "The sign shall not obscure architectural features and shall be constructed of substantial materials that are compatible with the materials, the surface of which they are affixed." Again, this is a standing billboard on its own, there's no structures on the site, so it doesn't obscure any architectural features, and the construction is of substantial materials. Number four is, "The colors and illumination assigned shall be appropriate intensity to the use and location of the site and to the site's immediate abutters." The intensity is minimal impact. Again, the Board typically conditions that the police chief or the building commissioner, if they determine that there's any glare or lighting impairment to motorists or interference with any safety operations, that they can require that the intensity be reduced. These electronic billboards also change the intensity with regard to the sunlight that they're getting throughout the day. The next item is signs, and sign contact...content should be appropriately sized, scaled, located, and oriented to the use and structure to which they are, on a standalone. So, this is a standalone billboard. Again, it complies with all the dimensional requirements of the bylaw, except for the distance from the closest electronic billboard. And the last one has to do with multi-tenant buildings, which is not applicable here. So, we feel that we meet all the requirements with regard to the town in order to receive the special permit. Additionally, again, we're trying to get information from the state with regard to exceptions that they've allowed in the past. This would not require an exception from the state when it goes in front of them. It was only the north-facing one that would require an exception. Because under the 700 CMR 3.175J, it states that, "Subject to the approval of the department, spacing between electronic signs may not apply where they are separated by a building or other obstruction, or the geometry of the roadway is such that only one sign is visible from any point on the public way or at any one time." And then additionally, it states under 700 CMR 3.176, it states pretty much the same thing, that, "Subject to the approval of the department, the 1,000-foot spacing requirement between electronic signs may not apply where a proposed sign and existing sign are separated by building or other permanent obstruction, or the geometry of the roadway is such that the motorist can only view one sign at any one point on the public way at any one time." So, again, the existing sign up by McDonald's has only one electronic sign, and that is north-facing. On the other side, the south-facing is a static. What we're requesting is that, on our billboard, the north-facing one will stay as static, but the south-facing, we would like to convert to electronic. That way, when any...anyone that's driving either northbound or southbound on Route 1, they cannot see both electronic billboards at the same time. And those sections I read to you are talking specifically about electronic signs shall not do certain things, but they're allowed to be less than 1,000 feet if those conditions exist. And in this case, they do exist, because, again, at any one time, a motorist will not see both of them. And that's why we will not need an exemption from the state in order to...for this to be allowed. We withdrew the north-facing billboard, because that would have required an exemption. And we know of exemptions that exist for such billboards, but we haven't been able to provide them to you. I gave you a list of some... I gave you a list of some of them that we were actually able to obtain from a competitor that kept a list. But you'll notice that these are all 2016 or earlier, since you stopped compiling them. We wanted to find the ones that were 2017 and later for your benefit. Since we couldn't get it, and we wanted to proceed with it this evening, we're withdrawing the request for the northbound-facing conversion and just asking for the south-facing billboard. And again, under the 700 CMR Massachusetts Department of Transportation Rules and Regulations, this will be allowed. And we feel that it can be allowed under our bylaws with the special permits in order to convert it, and also a special permit to allow the 1,000 to be reduced from 1,000 feet to 808 feet. And again, I want to clarify that the distance between the two are 808 feet. I put in the letter an error, a higher number. And I did go back to my original notes on the original application, and it was at 808 feet on that application. And if I could, I'd just like to ask Peter just to speak briefly about his attempts to get information that we thought would be helpful, but also the process, which why he feels that we would be able to get the approval for the south-facing billboard and convert to electronic with the state.
Thank you very much. We have requested through the Freedom of Information Act in November and just recently, all records for exemptions. There's a, there's a section of the CMR that allows for the Federal Highway Bureau, which is located in Cambridge, and the Secretary of Transportation and the Director of Outdoor Advertising can give an exemption to just about anything except for federal law, which cannot, which you cannot get an exemption from. An exemption is, in my opinion, is kind of like a waiver. Not a waiver, but I mean, it's a variance. But we haven't been able to get them to be able to provide the information to us, and I think it's merely due to COVID. They're still working out of the office. I don't know what their access is to the records. And they're kept especially, you know, once we move on, you know, and once the decisions are made, I think they're probably archived at some point. We will get it at some point. They're generally pretty decent. They're slow under normal circumstances, so you can probably imagine what it's like trying to get information, you know, the last couple of years from them. I think this, the whole, when we kept it out of the original billboard, the static billboards out of the buffer zones and the wetlands areas, and certainly, we don't have, you know, a very big impact. I have been doing this for about 34 years. I've built signs in harbors. I've built signs in wetlands. I've built signs in swamp areas and small lakes and the edges. Because of the fact that we don't displace very much, the pole can go almost directly in the ground, and it's easy to mitigate in future wetlands. But if you didn't have to do that, and you didn't have to go through that process, and it's a lot of work, and it's never a given, we decided to keep it out and, you know, figure out at some later point, you know, if we could do a digital transformation. Right now, we don't have enough information to be able to give to the board regarding precedent cases on the state level and the federal level. So we're sticking with the south-facing sign, because I think in the spirit of the state's guidelines, they look at it and they said, okay, we want 1,000 feet between signs, but it's kind of unfair if we're going to, you know, enforce that rule if you can't see the two signs at the same time. And then they throw away the distance regulations on that. And this is similar. We've got a north-facing sign that's about 300 square feet. It's a smaller sign, and at no time can you see either of the signs at the same time, as far as the digital faces of the signs. The light trespass from static signs is far greater than electronic billboards. Electronic billboards are LEDs. Their light is maintained. The lights on a static billboard are, quite frankly, they're very similar to, you know, Gillette Stadium. They light up everything. So in this aspect, it probably will be better even for wetlands and things like that. And I've long made presentations to cities and towns. That's the main function of this, the main function of my company, and my company is part of this, this company, MRV. We often have been, I took over the New Jersey Transit System and installed a whole bunch of new measures there to increase revenue for the towns and for the state, to the tune of about $300 million over the next 20 years, and that's probably about 10 years ago. In this instance here, and I've long maintained that static billboards really don't do a lot, you know, for the community, because, and they don't really do a lot, to tell you the truth, for the property owner in comparison to what a digital sign can do. The digital sign will provide so many hours of public service that's mandated by the state. It becomes part of the Amber Alert system. It can become part of the public safety system in the town of Foxborough, meaning that the town hall, police, fire, DPW, if there's some sort of weather-related event or catastrophe or public safety, you know, they can immediately take over the sign, just like the Amber Alert takes it over for 45 minutes and no flips go on. You have six to eight flips of advertising, and in there, you can incorporate far more economically-based plans for smaller businesses. With a static sign, you have one business, and it's a Big Mac, or it's a Budweiser, or it's a car. But if you rotate in other mechanisms, you know, you rotate in other advertising messages, you can really make it beneficial to both the state and for the local community. And there's also the financial benefit. I mean, there is no remediation to the town for the static billboard. So it's not nearly as attractive to either the landowner or the town, in my opinion, as far as monetarily. It's just a single sign that sits up there and changes every now and again. So this is something the state has decided to think about. Can't see them both at the same time. We can reduce it, because their intent was to actually not have two visible digital signs at the same time, at least in a general area. I'm sure they have had exemptions to that. I know that. But in general, their case is, if you can't see them both at the same time, you know, as long as they're 500 feet apart, which we're well in excess of that to meet state regulations, they're not going to, you know, use that rule. Thank you.
If I could just point one thing out. I'm not sure I included this earlier. The existing electronic sign at 29 Washington Street down by McDonald's, each side is 279 square feet, because it was a pre-existing non-conforming sign from probably before zoning. So it's a, it's a much smaller sign, less than half the size of all the other signs, which are 672 square feet along it. So again, we're very comfortable that you won't be able to see both of those electronic signs at the same time. They're facing different directions, and also, the existing one is much smaller. Thank you.
Can I say one last thing, please?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. And I think that, you know, given how towns, Board of Selectmen, city councils, and then certainly zoning Board of Appeals or special permitting authorities, you know, they are wary of precedent. But in this case, this property can't be used for really anything else, because it's so inundated with wetlands and the buffer zones. And given the fact that these set of circumstances, where a board is facing in the opposite direction from, you know, our proposed digital sign, I think it's an extremely unique situation that you probably won't find on any or very few other properties in dealing with this. It's just, it's very unique to me that we're so limited in where we could place it, and it's also not showing in the same direction as another sign.
Let me open this to questions from the board members. Lorraine, do you want to start?
Sure. Frank, you had mentioned the ability to move. Did you mention earlier the ability to move the sign to a different place within the wetlands?
If we have, the existing property is large enough that the sign could have been located 200 feet south, but it would have been located in the wetlands.
Yep.
So at the time of the initial determination that they wanted to put the static there, they decided to keep it out of the wetlands for all those purposes. When we initially talked and I got the distances, I asked them if they were ever going to convert this because of the distances with that electronic billboard. And they said, we may at some point, and we'll deal with it at that time. But they didn't want to go forward with the static at that time. But they didn't want to put it in the wetlands and out of the 100-foot buffer. But it could have been placed on the property 200 feet away, but it would have been in the wetlands. And it's the wetlands, you know.
Then it would be 1,000.
That caused them to put it where it is. Because that's pretty much as far as they could have put it. Because if they put it any more south, then the south-facing billboard would have been hanging over the wetlands, and we would have been in front of conservation. So, you know, the physical features of the property located the sign where it is.
Lorraine, anything else?
Almost said, thanks.
Okay. Kim, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I guess, well, I guess, a question, a comment. Maybe this is for, maybe this is for later. Just looking at some of the wording, the reading of the 700 CMR 3.17J and also 6. I guess I'm reading that a little bit differently, Frank, than what you're saying. So what I'm reading is that the spacing between the electronic signs may not apply where they are separated by a building or other obstruction, which is not the case here, or geometry of the roadway. So neither of those conditions appear. I mean, if you had some sort of a ruler, it may not be exactly, one may not be exactly straight at that point. But I don't believe the geometry of the road comes into play, and they're certainly not separated visually by a building or any other obstruction. So I know that you're focusing a little more on the latter part of both J and 6, which, as you said, are very similar, that only one sign is visible from any point on the public way at one time. But I'm reading it as because they were separated or the geometry of the road. So I'm not sure if the rest of the board is reading it in, you know, in that same way.
I can answer that. Excuse me. I think that the obstruction in this case is a static billboard that's on the south-facing sign itself of the current McDonald's billboard. It's preventing you from seeing even the back of the digital sign. And I know the state's intent, I do know the state's intent is to make sure that you can't see two digital billboards at the same time. And the obstruction here, or the geography of the roadway, would be that the people looking at these two signs are traveling in opposite directions. So, I mean, for the passengers that are coming towards Gillette Stadium, they could see the existing digital billboard. And for the passengers leaving Gillette Stadium, they're seeing the proposed, or would see the proposed digital billboard for us. So that could be very easily construed, and I think as being a geography of the roadway and the fact that they're separated by a static sign, which is another obstruction. But even more, even more, I think, I don't know the word, even more appropriate is when they go on in the next paragraph, the next section, and talk about two electronic signs not being visible at the same time, and that's exactly what this is.
Yeah, under 6, you know, it talks about the geometry of the roadway such that the motorist can only view one sign at any one point on the public way. So, you know, in this case, we're saying, I agree with you. It's pretty much straight in that area. You know, it's a little hilly and all that, but that's not affecting this. That they want to make sure you can't see two electronic signs at the same time if they're less than 1,000. And if you can't, then you don't have to be 1,000 feet away. And what we're stating is, is the fact that the existing ones are north-facing, and ours are south-facing. And again, theirs is much smaller too than a normal one, that even though it's the geometry of the roadway, even though it's straight, that you can't see both of them at the same time, that it meets the intent. And from the very beginning, Peter explained to me that what it means is you can't see both of them at the same time, however it is, whether it's a sharp turn, you know, in the roadway, which would probably meet your description, or in this case, because you have electronic billboards facing opposite directions. And again, one of them is much smaller than the other, that you can't see both of them.
Kim, when I drove it, I was looking and seeing that, you know, I could see both of those signs at the same time. But you're differentiating by saying the electronic version or aspect will not be visible as I'm driving south.
That's right, because the existing sign has a static. We have to be more than 500 feet away from that. We meet that. The electronic, we have to be 1,000 feet away. We're asking for a special permit to reduce that. So, and again, in the CMR, it's just discussing the electronic. You know, when you're going southbound, you can see the existing electronic, and you can see the existing static, which is facing northbound, but you can't see the southbound-facing static billboard this time that we want to do electronic. And when you're coming northbound, you only can see what we're proposing, the southbound-facing electronic billboard, and you cannot see the north-facing existing electronic billboard. Again, the geometry of the roadway, you can't see both of them. Yes, it's straight, it's just the way it works out. But they also want to allow it in the cases where there are curvatures in the roadway or other, you know.
That's how I was viewing that, use of that word, was geometry was curves in the roadway, not.
Yeah. But again, it says, "Can only view one sign at any one point on the public way at any one time." And. And in this case, again, I was south, neither, I was southbound-facing or the existing northbound, you can only see one of them at any one time.
Thanks.
Kim, do you have any reaction?
I hear, I hear what you're saying, but I'm not seeing that two, what you're talking about is two signs facing in opposite directions is not the geometry of the roadway. That's not how I'm interpreting that. I understand that you can't see through the static portion of the McDonald's billboard, if we want to call it the McDonald's billboard, to the electronic side, but that has nothing to do, I don't see that as the geometry of the roadway. So I'm not, I'm not fully... I'll be interested to hear what the rest of the board, you know, their questions.
It would be interesting to note that I'm extremely confident the state is, well, first of all, I know they've done it before, their main focus is to make sure that you can't see, and without an exemption, to make sure you can't see both faces. If you can't see both faces, there's not a public safety issue or anything like that. So that's why they put the language in here. But if they should deny it, they can't act before, obviously, the town does, then it just remains a static. And I, you know, but that's the only downfall, I guess, would be if they did say no. But I wouldn't be sitting here before you if I thought they were going to say no, because I know what their intent is. Well, first of all, I helped write the CMR, so I know what it's supposed to get after. Are they perfect? No, there's a lot of the CMR that's not perfect. But in this instance, the intent, and I'm sure the town's intent also was, you know, not visual clutter, but an electronic billboard is offering so much more to the town than seeing just one static billboard that's less. But in this case, you're not even seeing two digital signs within 1,000 feet. We're not asking for that exemption. And the state still could reject it, and I think you'd, I wouldn't see where that would be. It wouldn't be of any harm to the town, I guess, at that point. They reject it, they reject it, and I'm wrong. And Mr. Spleen is wrong.
And again, they've stated it twice in the CMR. So, you know, my interpretation is that they were willing to allow the reduction. I mean, it seemed very odd to me that they said almost the exact same thing twice. They will allow the reduction of less than 1,000-foot spacing requirement for these reasons. And again, in the second one, they make it, you know, the first one says one visible from any point, the other one view one sign, but it says almost the same thing. So my interpretation and my understanding, the expert, is if you can view both of those signs at any point on the roadway, it's a no. But if you can't view both electronic signs anywhere on the highway together, then it's a yes. But I understand what you're saying, too.
Kurt, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. I don't have any questions either. I do have some things to talk about or to say, but I want to hold off on that. Is there anybody in the, in Town Hall, any member of the public? And obviously, there looks like there's nobody zooming.
Nobody wants to make a comment, no.
I'm sorry?
Nobody wants to make a comment, no.
Okay. There are people there?
For the next round.
Okay. Why don't we close, a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And me, yes. So let me just make a couple of my comments. State regulations, 317-5G says electronic sign shall not be within 1,000 feet of another off-premise permitted electronic sign on the same side of the traveled way, regardless of which direction the sign is intended to face. 317-5J says that subject to approval of the department, spacing between electronic signs may not apply where they are separated by a building or other obstruction, or the geometry of the roadway is such that only one sign is visible from any point on the public way at any one time. And 317-6 has very, very, you know, similar wording. I read, I read 317-5J, as I believe Kim is reading it, such that the only one sign being visible is tied into the other portion of that, of that paragraph. So in other words, a building or other obstruction or the geometry of the roadway has to make the, besides not being visible. And not the fact that one is facing north and one is facing south. Now, notwithstanding the fact that the Office of Advertising, the Outdoor Advertising Board, rather, may, in the past, have read these paragraphs, these provisions, as Mr. McClary has indicated, I just want to point out that our signed bylaw says that no electronic billboard may be placed within a 1,000-foot radius of another electronic billboard. And here we do have the North Street billboard, portion of which is electronic. And if we were to allow, whether it's the south side or both sides, of the billboard that Media Partners owns to be electronic, that would be within a 1,000-foot radius of the North Street electronic sign. So again, I think what is controlling here is not what the OAB may have decided in prior cases, but what our own signed bylaw does state. Comments for anybody else?
I agree, Barney. I mean, we went in front of all the different boards, the committees, and talked about the 1,000-foot radius, mapped it out. You know, again, I don't see that there's any geometry involved here, so I think the bylaw does not permit it.
Kim?
I agree with what you both have said.
And Kurt?
I agree with what you've said as well.
Okay. And the other, other thing that I would be, you know, concerned about is, you know, creating a precedent here. I mean, we're always, Kurt indicated in the last matter, we're always concerned about precedent. And it would be a concern to me that if we were to, in a sense, you know, ignore the 1,000-foot radius requirement and grant what is being requested, we're now creating a precedent that, you know, that may be, you know, to our detriment, you know, later on. You know, as Lorraine, you know, well knows, when we initially, three years ago, I guess it's three years ago now, were proposing to amend the signed bylaw to allow electronic signs, electronic billboards. Initially, Bill Caspar and I, on behalf of the Billboard Advisory Committee, met with the Board of Selectmen and indicated, again, the 1,000-foot radius would apply. Then Lorraine and I met with the Advisory Committee and stated the same. The Billboard Advisory Committee prepared a report to Town Meeting in which we indicated that the, that electronic billboards would be no less than 1,000 feet, you know, apart. And I stated that at Town Meeting. And I'd be concerned about, you know, in this case, without some compelling reason to go against that, I would be concerned about creating a precedent that would be adverse to what we had reported, purported, and stated, and obviously approved at Town Meeting. So unless there's something else, do we need a motion? We do need a motion.
I move that we decline the application.
Second.
Okay. Again, I got to do this by roll call, so Kim?
Yes.
And Lorraine?
Yes.
And me, yes. So, thank you very much. Peter, maybe you can answer my question here today. In reviewing the OAB regulations, there are provisions relative to appeals. I was reading that as only referring to appeals from the decision of the OAB.
That's correct.
Do you have the right to appeal, you have the right to appeal our decision to the OAB?
No, 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 no. Yours is to Land Court or Superior Court, but we're not going to do that.
Okay, that's how I read it.
That's an administrative appeal through an administrative judge.
Administrative law judge process.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank, don't go away or just come back. Diana, did you ever send minutes out?
I sent minutes out, I did. I believe I did. Did I?
If you did, I apologize. I don't have them.
I don't remember seeing them.
I wrote them.
Do you have them with you that you can read them? Because we obviously didn't do very much.
I mean, it's no big deal if we wait until the next sign.
Okay. Frank, are you ready?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Attorney Burr is with me.
Good evening.
Why don't you start, Frank?
What was that?
You want to start or you want me to start?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, as the board recalls at the last meeting, we talked, after our discussion with Attorney Spleen and Burr about preparing a, an amendment to the signed bylaw that would ultimately allow to have billboards along Interstate 95 and Interstate 495. And I prepared two scenarios initially. One is the one that I mailed out to you the other day, sent to you the other day by email, which would allow for, you know, billboards along the interstates by means of revising the signed District 2 provisions in the, in the signed bylaw. The other option that I drafted was to create an overlay district. And after discussing the matter with Frank and discussing the matter with Bob, we determined that what you have in front of you is the better way to do it. In other words, to make some revisions to the, to the District 2 provisions relative to signs. You know, subsequent, we made some, you know, small, you know, tweaks to it. And what you have in front of you essentially is a provision that would provide that billboards could be allowed in signed District 2 by means of a special sign permit on lots that are, that have a lot line that is not, on lots that are but Interstate 95 or Interstate 495, or on lots with a lot line that is not more than 250 feet from either interstate, and that are situated within the town's limited industrial district. And consistent with the current signed bylaw provisions, no billboard may exceed 672 square feet in area. We also are consistent with the current signed bylaw of creating the 500-foot radius for static signs and 1,000-foot radius for electronic billboards. Consistent with the current bylaw, billboards must be set back at least 10 feet from the lot line. And then I've got a provision in here that no billboard may be placed within blank feet of an existing residential unit. I haven't decided, even though Lorraine and I have talked about it, and Frank and I have talked about it, and Bob and I have talked about it, as to what the appropriate distance may be. I think what we're looking to do right now is to obviously answer any questions that other board members may have, and then ultimately to, to make the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen that they consider placing this proposed bylaw on the town warrant for consideration at the May Town Meeting, the annual Town Meeting. Frank, you want to jump in now?
No, I think you summed it up quite well. Again, I think we need to determine what that distance between the billboard and a residential unit is. Again, this all began when Arthur Rounds on Springbrook Road was approached to put a billboard on his property. So we want to make sure that the distance is adequate for his property from our perspective. And again, our preference is to work with this board, the Selectmen and any other board committee, advisory, planning board, to put this together so that whatever goes in front of the Town Meeting, everyone is comfortable with if it passes. But again, if, for example, the board decides that they want, you know, we'll go crazy, 2,000-feet distance, we'll put our own citizen's petition together with the appropriate line. And I'm not using that as a threat, I'm just saying that, you know, we originally came here with the idea of trying to get the changes so that Mr. Rounds can put a billboard on his property. I use 2,000 because I know no one would use that number. But I think we can come up with a number that can be appropriate, you know? I know Attorney Burr has, you know, recommended 300, that's, you know, the length of a football field, which is a good distance, and we'd be fine with that. Because again, our closest residential unit on our side of 95 is over 1,000 feet away. But because there's a, I believe it's a two-family that abuts 95 on the other side of 95, that's actually our closest residential unit to where we would probably put the sign on Mr. Rounds's. So we want to make sure that, you know, we're within that area to be able to do it. And that's approximately 500 feet. And I'm going to get that confirmed with Bay Colony and Bill Buckley. So I think we can do approximately 500 feet. Also, I'd like to say is that, you know, this board was kind of designated by the Board of Selectmen to be the overseer of the signed bylaw. So I think they may be looking for a recommendation also from you at some point.
Initially, you know, after my first draft, you know, Lorraine asked me if I would, if what I was thinking about was 1,000 feet as far as the distance from, you know, the closest residential unit. And, you know, I think my reply to Lorraine was, you know, that would be ideal, but if that's the case, we would never be able to place a billboard on the DPW property, which at the very least is something that, you know, Bill Keegan, our town manager, has some... some interest in. I'm not sure, you know, where on that property a billboard can be placed, and therefore I'm not sure, you know, how close a billboard would be to any residential unit. There are homes, and there are apartments, as people know, on Elm Street. Some of those homes are in the limited industrial district. And there are homes on Central Street, which is fairly close to the DPW garage. You know, what I would, you know, hope is that if the Board of Selectmen have some interest in proceeding with this matter, that somebody would, you know, do some calculations and some determinations as to where a billboard could be placed on the DPW property, then we would at least get a sense as to distance from residential units. And that would allow for us to, you know, to complete this kind of proposal. But I think, again, at this point in time, you know, my position is that I would like us to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that they give consideration to placing this on the town warrant in May. Questions, comments, what have you?
I agree. Barney, taking it to the board, let them decide, you know, if they want to, you know, support this. I would think, you know, assuming that Bill Keegan is having some discussions with them about DPW opportunities, they should be able to figure out pretty quickly where they want to put it. I tried driving, you know, I drove by and was just looking at the different... not sure where they would want to put it, because there are some houses right there, you know, by the railroad tracks and, you know. Football field seems like a reasonable amount. I just don't know of where that is in relationship to their property.
Kim, any questions or comments?
No, I do like the idea of this going to the Selectmen and letting them take this and move it forward or not move it forward.
Kurt?
No, I agree with what Kim just said as well.
Frank, would that be satisfactory? Just say that the consensus of our board was to proceed?
Yes, yes. What I'd like to...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
What I'd like to recommend is, I've already talked to Bill Keegan about possibly going on the February 1, Board of Selectmen's meeting, to bring this forward at that time, to discuss with him. And between now and then, I'll also reach out to Bill Keegan about it. I think it would be good if one of the members also did, to see if they can start looking at, you know, what they feel is needed for the distance from any residential units with regard to that. Now, you know, my one concern is, again, if we do it as a citizen's petition, whatever we give them has to go on the warrant that way. I would just want some assurances that if we don't do the citizen's petition and this goes forward, that a number that we're comfortable with will be placed there. Because again, if they say 1,000 feet, we're not comfortable with that, and we just... we'll do our own citizen's petition.
Yeah.
Now, I think if they want to try to do something on the Highway Department, whatever number they come up with, we're going to be comfortable with. You know, the 1,000 feet, I think I'd have to go back and look at it. I don't think anybody could put any signs on it because of all the residences on the other side of 95. You know, so that 1,000 feet could be, you know, a nonstarter. So that has to be looked at. But also, what would be required on the DPW site, you know?
That's really the number that needs to be investigated.
Yeah, and the location. You know, I really don't know the back of that lot. There could be areas that they just can't put it, and it could only be certain as they can. So that may have to be looked at, too. But I think we can, you know, work between now and then, especially if they're willing to put it on.
Yep.
Because if they're willing to put it on, then this can be modified right up until, you know, the final closing of the warrant as it's open and closed and all that. It can be open to, you know, change the language, however it is. If we put it in a citizen's petition, it can't be changed. You know, we'd rather work with everyone to try to get the best possible that goes in front of town meeting so that if it's approved, you know, we're as comfortable as we can with it. And we very much appreciate all the help, you know, Barney and all the members have given us on this. It's been a good process. And I was hoping it was going to work out this way, and I think it worked out great. I want to just thank you all. So can anyone... Barney, you're going to be late. Can anyone else go to the February 1?
As of now, I'm away, but that unfortunately may be changing. But I did speak with Lorraine, and she said that she would be able to attend if I can't. And even if I can, Lorraine, hopefully you can join me then.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask one question before we finish with this? So we're saying that this is going to be... our request is that this is sent to the Board of Selectmen for them to consider it, but we are not approving or disapproving of it. We are just requesting that they take a look at this now, right? So it's not going over with ZBA approval.
Yeah, at this point in time, you know, they may ask us later on, and we'll obviously take up that request. But my position has been, as I indicated, you know, in the past, this should come as a Board of Selectmen proposal, not a ZBA proposal. Because it really reflects a policy change to what we have in the bylaw right now. And I did speak with Bill Keegan about it, and, you know, he expressed his agreement with that position.
And that can even...
So again, you know, the Board of Selectmen may come back to us and say, okay, you know, come time for town meeting, we want to go ahead with this. We'd like a recommendation from the, you know, entity that deals with signed bylaws, and we'll cross that bridge, you know, when and if it comes.
And that can even list it as a citizen's petition or a citizen's request, since it's not technically a petition, but we're requesting that it be put on. So, you know, I don't think that'll be an issue. And if it does become an issue, we'll just do a citizen's petition, you know, to get it on. I think it's better if we all work together to get this moved forward, and then people can take a look at it and decide whether they're in favor of it or not.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Again, thank you for all the help on the writing of it, too.
I just got a couple of sort of very short and quick announcements. For the last, seems like forever, I've been saying that, you know, we may get a 40B from the Moore Street property next month. We may get it next month. We may get it next month. Diana contacted me earlier this week and indicated that, based on information that Bill Buckley had provided, number one, they still do not have the project eligibility letter. And after getting it, there's enough other things to do that it might be late spring, early summer before that application hits us. So, you know, I sort of feel like the boy who was crying wolf, but nothing is apparently going to be imminent on that one. I do know from a discussion that I had last week with Paige Duncan that the Housing Authority, which wants to construct a senior citizen housing complex that's basically on Wall Street, right off of 140, has begun the process as far as that particular matter. That also would ultimately end up as a comprehensive permit. They have gotten two proposals in response to their RFP, and I gather the Housing Authority is going to be to meeting with those two parties over the course of, say, the next month to... before they finally make their decision. Long and the short of it is, it's entirely possible that we'll have two comprehensive permits that, in one respect or another, will overlap. When and if that happens, we'll figure out how best to deal with it. Second, I think as everybody, as I mentioned previously, we have a new building commissioner, and he'll be starting on Monday. His name is Scott Shippey. You know, if you have a chance at some point in the next few weeks, just, you know, stop and introduce yourself to him. You know, I look forward to working with him, and I'm sure... and I know from what he had said during the interview, he looks forward to working with us. Third, and this has to do with billboards. Three years ago, we approved a billboard on 124 Washington Street. And that approval, this was a static billboard. It was for Lamar Advertising. That approval required the billboard to be placed 16 feet from the roadway. About a week and a half, two weeks ago, I started receiving emails from Paul DeBadges, who's the interim building commissioner, indicating that the billboard was not being placed consistent with our decision and consistent with the plans that we had approved. And Diana has received from me copies of all the emails that Paul has been copying me on. The long and the short of it is, I spoke with Bill Caspari last week. Bill has done some, you know, work with Lamar relative to the matter. And we came up with a potential resolution of the situation, but that resolution will require a modification of our original decision. That'll probably be several months from now before it hits us. And I think that is all that I have. Diana, anything else to bring to our attention?
No. I've had a few people inquire about filling out applications, but then I don't see them anymore. So I don't know if they're waiting for the new building commissioner or changing their minds or just waiting for the spring building thing to start.
And I've had a couple of emails, one from Paul DeBadges yesterday relative to a potential sign application, and then one from Gabby Jordan today, also relative to a different potential sign application. Neither one would be billboards, but both would, in one part or another, require a special sign permit. That's all I've got, unless anybody else has any questions or comments or anything. Oh, I guess the one other thing is, and we can't talk about it because I don't want to go... we can't go into executive session tonight. I think everybody is up to date on the litigation, on the oil man litigation. I think what I'll do is, the next time we do have a meeting, I'll ask Pat Costello to come in and talk with us. Obviously, if anything else transpires in the next several weeks, I'll let everybody know. If anybody has any questions, you know, just give me a call. That is it. A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And move we adjourn.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Kim?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And me, yes. Long meeting tonight. Good meeting tonight, I think.
Definitely.
Yeah, good decision, everybody. Thanks, everybody.